Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our June 28, 2020 City Council Work Session. Obviously, this meeting has been conducted electronically. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Tara, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Turner?
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes, here.
King?
Here.
Powers?
She's muted, but she's here.
Okay, and Luttrell?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sora, would you introduce our staff and other guests, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. You just heard from our city recorder, Tara Music. Tim Beavers, Director of Development Services, also on the line. Danielle Smith, our city attorney, is participating also in today's meeting, along with John Luttrell, Director of Community Relations, Shane Barney, who's orchestrating this entire event from behind the scenes. We also have Tom Anderson, Director of Economic Development, Terry Napier, Director of Parks and Recreation. In addition, we have some guests with us, Mr. Ben Baker, who's the Chief Operating Officer for CARE here, along with Ms. Jane Pettis, who's Director of Clinical Services for that organization, will be participating in discussion a little bit later on our agenda. We also have Dr. Stephen May, as well as Mr. Gary Mace, with their respective roles with the Sullivan County Regional Health Department. And then lastly, we have Justin Ball, who's TCRS Regional Outreach Specialist, that will be with us to discuss the death benefit option for legacy employees.
Okay, I'd also like to ask, do we know if any members of the media are joining us today? Anyone? Okay, Ms. Smith, would you please discuss the necessity of conducting our electronic meeting?
Yes, Mayor, as you all know, I think by now, Governor Lee issued Executive Order 16, which was extended by Orders 34 and 51, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the extent to allow governing bodies to meet electronically, rather than having a quorum of members physically in the same location. So at this time, City Council is intending to meet by an interactive room, with the meeting being broadcast to the public via YouTube and other channels. At this point, if this is how you desire to meet, then you, as a body, should make a determination that meeting electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennessee in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. It'd be appropriate for you to each indicate by roll call whether you think this is appropriate and necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. If you don't agree that it's necessary, then we would adjourn this meeting until such time as we can meet physically.
Ms. Music, would you do a roll call?
Yes. Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
Yeah. King?
Yes.
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce, Mr. Sora, you had to introduce our Sullivan County Health Department for our COVID-19 briefing.
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. We have with us today, Mr. Gary Mace, who's Director of Sullivan County Regional Health Department, along with Dr. Stephen May, who's the Chief Medical Officer, and has been there at practice really since the onset of the virus, to periodically provide City Council an update, especially during our work session format. So with that, I'll turn it over to them there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sora, and thank you, Mayor Luttrell, and the Bristol Council for inviting us today. It's really an honor for us to appear in front of the Bristol Council and inform them about this pandemic that we're suffering through in Sullivan County. I'll just speak quickly about some operational things that are going on, and of course, I'm sure you want to hear Dr. May's data points, and then we'll take questions. But we will operate today on the assumption that the Council is well-informed about COVID and in light of our past meetings and so on and so forth. So we can talk more specifically about issues within Sullivan County. First and foremost, I think one of the most important things that has happened since the last time we were with the Council is the mask mandate. The Governor Lee approved county mayors throughout Tennessee to authorize a mask mandate. Sullivan County Mayor Venable did issue a mandate, and I will also proudly point out that Mayor Luttrell was there with Mayor Venable and Mayor Shaw from the City of Kingsport, and Mayor Wells expressed her support as well from the City of Love City. So it was truly a good that all of our leaders in the cities and counties supported Mayor Venable in this effort for a mask mandate, and very appreciative of that. Of course, the most important message that we, as leaders in our communities, can continue or should continue to emphasize is wearing a mask, social distancing, and good hygiene. And if someone is sick, they should not be out, and they should not go to work. And you can receive a COVID test at Sullivan County Regional Health Department by calling 279-2777 and schedule a test. And if you're symptomatic and need a test, we have a process for that, but it is the same number. So we continue to stay in close contact with Ballard Health System. There are two mission objectives that are most important right now in Sullivan County, and that is disease containment. That is a process that the Health Department uses for contact tracing and investigation, and isolation and quarantine. And the second mission objective is to spread disease burden so that it doesn't overwhelm our healthcare system, which of course, we have one system, Ballard Health System, but we certainly don't want to overwhelm the hospitals and tri-cities to where they cannot provide care. So those are two very important objectives. Obviously, you know, we've been working with the school system very closely, school administration, and put together some opening guidelines or safety guidelines from a health perspective, and submitted those to the respective school boards throughout the county. And they are looking at those plans closely, and I believe they're going through the process for their respective boards to approve. So certainly take questions, and I'll kick it over to Dr. May and let him talk about some of the data elements of the disease burden.
Okay, just to catch you up on where we are. In Tennessee, we're approaching close to 100,000 cases with 978 deaths and 4,000 hospitalizations. There are averaging about 50 to 60 new hospitalizations today across the state. Our five-day testing average across the state of Tennessee is at 10%. And looking at Sullivan County's R-N-O-L, which is the number of people that were predicted to infect based on each new case, is 1.11. That's better than it was a week ago, at close to 1.47. We are working on about a dozen different clusters within the community, five of those being within the nursing home setting. In Sullivan County, we have approached 607 cases as of this morning. We have essentially been doubling our number of cases every week for the last four weeks. 61%, however, have recovered. We are now working over 200 active cases. We have 16 currently in the hospital, total 47 hospitalizations altogether, seven deaths. We know that the Ballard Healthcare System is operating at about a 95% capacity. And looking at hospital beds in Sullivan County, we're down to about two ICU beds and about 30 floor beds, which is better than we were at the first of the week. We're currently averaging about 25 new cases per day, which puts our new case rate average at 15.79, which effectively shuts down all nursing homes for visitation. And this is also a key number we've been looking at as far as zoning for school operations and safe operations within their school opening plan. And we continue to work on the case investigation, contact tracing, increasing our staffing to deal with such operations across the state. Looking at what we're doing with what we have, we're actually operating very, very efficiently, but we're also starting to feel the stress. So we are looking at increasing staffing. So we are at the standard 1% on our desk, though, seven out of 607. And that's holding with the rate, state rate for Tennessee, which is also at 1%. And I'll entertain any questions now.
Dr. May, do we know of the active cases now? We talked about these clusters in the nursing homes. Do you have any idea as far as just approximately of those active cases of where those clusters are in the nursing homes?
Well, currently, looking at active cases within a nursing home setting, we're looking at about 50, that's a ballpark figure, of our active cases. When we're trying to keep up with those now, how many are actually within the cluster setting?
So we've got about 25% of our active cases are within those clusters in the nursing home?
That is correct.
Okay.
So can you clarify on those clusters? It's understandable that the nursing home clients, folks who live there, are counted as the cluster. But those staff who go out in the community as well, they're counted as that cluster, or are they counted as community?
They are counted actually within the cluster. It includes residents and staff.
When you talk about the schools, let's see if I hit the wrong thing, maybe. When you talk about the schools, and you take the clusters out of the numbers, is that what is giving us an average of 15.7? Is that without the clusters?
No, that actually includes all cases, and that is based today off the T D H website that we follow on the Epi curve.
So our schools, well, is there a different percentage that our schools will be following, taking the clusters out of consideration?
When we recalculate that number, taking into account for the clusters, it does not get you anywhere near the level of 10.
Thank you.
So I was just going to ask, so I really am pleased that our Health Department offers testing, and I think several folks have gone there for testing, and really appreciate that process. So can you confirm is COVID testing, no matter where you go, at no charge? And are there other places besides the Health Department if folks are unable to work with a schedule or whatever?
Well, we're able to provide the testing at no charge. Most testing through most labs, certified labs throughout the state, are billing back to the state. I'm not sure what's happening with the primary care physicians out in the community, how they're doing that type of billing. We know the labs that we all work with are doing direct billing back to the state of Tennessee.
And I would just make note that that's been a positive for, I think that's some of the federal funding that our state, Governor Lee, determined to spend on testing, and also on the masks that we've been able to hand out, et cetera. I just also, it's been several weeks, several meetings since I heard, but just wanted to share with everybody the perspectives from the meetings we've been able to have with the Governor's Task Force, with Mark Azell, which have been very, very helpful, but just wanted to share some of that conversation that Jackson, Madison mayor has really been pleading for, which is City of Jackson and also the mayor of Madison County, for a mask mandate across the state, because they have the hospital for their region, and they are the only ones in that region to have instituted that mask mandate. Yet in their hospital, which is being tested to the max, probably further along than we are with ours, 87% of those folks who are hospitalized with COVID come from outside of their county. So, and therefore, they don't have control to try to get a mask mandate in that county to help to reduce. So that's some of the conversation, there's a lot of conversation, but that's some of the conversation that has gone on at that meeting.
And I just want to compliment Gary Mace and Dr. May for their Health Department. My husband and I were deemed to be a first contact of a positive diagnosis, a test result. We have both tested negative, but the Health Department was very accommodating and just did a great job, and just want to encourage everyone to reach out to our local Health Department.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad you got negative results, by the way.
Me too.
Yeah, Dr. Mace, I have another question. I know you've heard me in another setting talk about the Veterans Administration, and those numbers or how they're impacted in the region or the area. Are there any other hospitals or institutions like that that those numbers are not calculated in our area?
VA is the only area that I'm aware of. Now, you do need to be aware of, there is sometimes a little bit of a delay getting some of the lab results into our computers for us to follow up and work upon. So sometimes you may see a little difference between what we calculate versus what the state puts out. So don't let that surprise you. It's got to do with the delay in the feeding into the computer systems. But VA Medical Center is the only one in our area that I think that would truly affect our numbers that we don't have access to.
Yeah, I know they reported another death yesterday, so we are seeing the death toll climb from down there.
Can y'all also share, and I know it depends, that it varies, but approximate times for tests to be returned, and also what the process is? I think I shared with y'all somebody who was told that they would not hear if their test was negative. So what is that process? What should people expect? And again, this is not just for us. We know, the other times we've had y'all on, we have lots of people anxious to get updates that are watching. So, yeah.
Well, each laboratory is different. We get a twice-weekly report on their reporting times. When we look at one of our local labs, they can turn it around in 24 hours. Ballard is looking at three to four days now. A RUP, which is where Ballard sends a lot, can be six to seven days. A E L, Quest, LabCorp are all working at seven to eight days. And this is a problem statewide, getting these tests back quick enough that we can act upon and get people back to work or back into their situation. So it is a statewide problem. They are working on it. They are rapidly increasing capacity for testing, recognizing that across the state of Tennessee, we're doing anywhere from 25,000 to 50,000 tests a day.
What's the expectation for people being notified, or people needing to call back, or expecting to have computer access, or whatever that might be?
That also depends upon the laboratory and where the test was collected. Once we receive the notification, especially of a positive, we try to get within 24 to 36 hours to start the case investigation. The negative notifications are taking a little longer to get out. And if it's through Ballard or another institution, they get that test result first. They usually notify the patient based on where you got it, and then it feeds into our computers here at the Health Department.
So let me just say, for an example, A E L lab, which is in the early days, as we call it now, was one of the first labs that we used. That was a heavy user for us in Northeast Tennessee. We really aren't able to use them any longer. Their capacity was so overwhelmed, they prioritized their work. And so we virtually had to drop A E L, as most everybody in the state did as well. The lab capacity is a real problem for us in public health. And it's, as Dr. May told you, I'm looking at a lab report now, some days are seven days, some days are almost nine days, some labs are two days. So from a public health standpoint, it's becoming where lab is not very functional in terms of contact tracing and notification. So until the country or a policy decider changes the methodology of testing, we're probably going to be at this, because I have a feeling that the labs are at maximum capacity all over the country. And with the rising cases all over the country, we have the situation we're in, we could very well end up like we were in early days, whereas if you're symptomatic, and you're going to be quarantined or isolated without testing capability. And so that is pretty much what we're doing now in Sullivan County, and until they get the lab test back, which there are very low numbers so far, but there are lab results that have came back just the day before the quarantine ended. So from a public health standpoint, it's a challenge, but it's always been a challenge since this pandemic started.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. May or Gary?
I'll just also thank them, and also make note, Gary, don't take offense. It's always Dr. May and Gary.
I don't, I don't. Thank you for saying that. I feel sorry for Dr. May. My mother always wanted me to be a doctor, so that's my only shot there. So, but I know Dr. May gets tired of it, but someone said they're synonymous, but they're really not. Dr. May is first class, so.
It does make it interesting for us to have Gary Mace and Dr. May, and I don't know how y'all came to be in the same office in your positions, but it makes it interesting. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, and I really do appreciate, Mayor, you having us and inviting us. And Bill Sora and his staff are incredible to work with, very supportive, and we make a good team, and I really do appreciate the City of Bristol's support. And I've said this, and I will continue to say, that our region has done well in this pandemic so far, and I cannot overstate that it's the mayors working together, the city and the county being together, being informed together, making decisions together, and along with our county and city school system. It's extremely important for our citizens to know how well our governments are working together on this pandemic crisis, and trying to respond for the safety of our citizens, and keep city and county services functioning. And it should never be underestimated the importance and the power of that. So I, for one, greatly appreciate it, and I witness it every day. So thank you very much.
So after that nice speech, one other thing, we have talked about masks, and our city, through our parks and rec, have handed out a couple of times, but just for anybody listening, I do know that masks were provided recently to our library. I do know that masks were provided recently to, at, to our library. And at risk of our library being flooded with requests, I can say for public, if anybody does need a mask, that I think our library can provide a mask to you and probably some other areas as well. But just to, to put that in there.
Thank you. And I hope everyone stays safe. And if you have any questions, please reach out to Dr. May or I anytime.
Will do. Thank you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a presentation of Employee Health and Wellness Annual Report. Mr. Sora?
Yes, so this January of 2017, but basically the city, the city council took a chance on, on funding an employee wellness center to help improve the health of our employees. And then also, we were struggling at that time with escalating healthcare costs. And I remember talking with council around that time about the elephant in the room budgetarily was, was the deficit that we were seeing in terms of our healthcare costs. I'm pleased to, to report that three years later, we've got a handle on our healthcare costs. I, I do believe that, that the health, the care here as the provider of our employee clinic has made a significant difference in this. We, we use it for, our employees use it for urgent care. Their spouses are also able to develop themselves of the urgent care aspect. We use it for pre-employment screening. We use it for drug screening. We use it for our public safety, annual physicals. We do it for our annual wellness checks and health coaching of our employees. And then we also do, use them for post-accident drug screening or alcohol screening and so forth that's required through our, our federal requirements for CDL operators. But we're very proud of, of, of how this has worked out. We're very excited. We're, we feel like we're on the leading edge in, in providing this type of service for our employees. As has been our custom since a year out from our annually, we, we present Mr. Ben Baker, their, their C, their Chief Operating Officer, as well as Jane Pettis, our Director of Clinical Services are with us today to give us an update, not only in terms of the healthcare picture of our employees and the successes that we're seeing, but also the problem areas that we need to focus on. And then also the financial picture of the, of the clinic and how we feel like it's helping our bottom line in terms of our healthcare costs. So Mary Lee, do you have anything to, to add, or we just turn it over to Ben and Jane?
I think we'll turn it over to Ben and Jane. Well said. Mr. Sora, thank you. I'm very excited. We had hoped to present this topic in person. It's one that we wanted to present in person, but didn't want to wait any longer. So I'm going to turn it over to them and then possibly have some closing remarks. I'm going to share my screen for the presentation and Ben is going to talk us through it. So give me just a second.
Well, Mary Lee's doing that. Just let me extend my thanks to all of you for this opportunity. I enjoyed meeting many of you in person last year for this presentation. Wish we could be together this year. And I'm hopeful that next year, it'll be back in person again. I'm, I'm confident of that. So based on the, the great feedback from the last presentation, it's, it's an honor to be working with a community such as yours, being as aggressive as you can and then taking care of your, your citizens, as well as your employees and their families. So we'll jump in now and talk about an update from the, from your clinic. Mary Lee, if you'll go to the next slide, we'll talk about a brief agenda. We're going to spend a few minutes together and I, I've got some things prepared, but we also want to be flexible. And if you have any questions, obviously, please raise those, those questions and we'll take them as we go from slide to slide.
Okay. Looks like I'm having some, there we go.
Great. So we'll talk through the financials. We'll look at a summary of some of the, the data that supports the financials. We'll talk about savings and the various ways that we've been able to do that. We'll look at the activity in your health center, the, how often folks have come to see us, the kinds of utilization numbers that we're seeing. We'll give you some feedback based on the long-term analysis of the health risk that your population has and improvements that we've seen over the past couple of years. And then we'll look at some actual feedback from your employees and their family members from some survey work that we've done. This first page is a summary of the financials. You'll see several paragraphs here. The total cost of program is just over $335,000. And that includes both the primary care and the occupational component. From a savings point of view, if we looked at the, the same activity that took place in your health center, if had it gone out into the marketplace, we're projecting about a $482,000 cost that you would have incurred, a savings that you enjoy. There's about, we'll look at the specifics of each of these components in just a moment, and we'll drill down to where that came from. But there's also savings you see in the third paragraph for the patients themselves, because they're able to access the health center without any copays or deductibles that are being required, then they're able to keep about eighty-three, almost $84,000 in their pockets as a result of that. That's a huge benefit in addition to the service itself and all the other things that are part of the program. So that's a total savings to the City of Bristol of about $146,000. So let's drill into some of those specifics and then we'll take some questions that you might have. As I mentioned, we, and as Mr. Sora mentioned, we have a wide range of services that we provide. And if we, we actually, although we do not generate codes to send to be processed from a claims perspective, we do capture those codes, those same activities that happen in any medical clinic, we capture those. And so we know exactly what items or, and procedures are performed in the health center. We can then look at your actual claims data, and we can make the following determination. If the same activity had gone out into the market and generated a claim, based on the actual dollars that you do spend in the market, what would your costs have been? That top right number you see is $169. That's your market visit cost on average. Now, that is not just the cost of the visit itself. Whenever someone accesses the healthcare system in, in your area, there's about two or three codes that are triggered that need to be paid. The office visit itself, there may be visit charges associated with other aspects of the visit, whether there's an injection or a test or other kinds of things that are performed. But on average, the plan is paying $169.26. In contrast, what is the cost of that visit when someone accesses it through your health center? It's just over $70. It's $70.44. In fact, our cost per visit is down this past year about 16% driven by a couple of things. Because our costs are relatively fixed, the more visits that we see, we divide those by the number of the actual dollars that are spent and our costs come down. We've also been more efficient in some of the ways that our health center has been deployed this past year in terms of items that we purchased or the staffing component. So overall, that represents about a $286,000 savings over what you would have paid in the market. So let me pause here and see if there's any questions about what we discussed so far. Okay, Mary Lee, we'll jump to the next slide then. This is a component that looks at the overall cost, cost avoidance. We're about $286,000 that we save versus the market in terms of the actual activity. But we also dispense medications. We carry about 100 to 150 different medications, mostly generics, that we can dispense to the patients as they are seeing us at the health center. That does a couple of things. Number one, studies show that by dispensing it right there at the visit, patients are more compliant. They'll take the meds more regularly. Many patients who receive a script at a regular doctor's office sometimes don't get that filled. And in this setting, that's a benefit to be able to hand it to them right there as we're talking to them about their issue. It also affords us an opportunity to give more education about why this medication is important, how do you take it, those kinds of things. And there's a cost savings, because we do dispense it for free to the employees, the savings to them. But we only carry medications that we know can be dispensed less expensively than what it would be to actually have it filled out in the marketplace. So you saved about $13,000 as a result of that. Next, there's a productivity to the city that's, that's important. On average, we're seeing in the marketplace that if you were to leave your work site and go to a, to a doctor's office, maybe sit for a while in the waiting room, by the time you see the provider, go pick up your prescription and get back to work, on average in America, that's somewhere around three hours. If we're able to do that and get somebody back to work in about 30 minutes with your health center, what's the value in comparing that to, from a productivity perspective? And based on some conservative data, assuming about $15 an hour per employee in terms of their, their cost, that equates to about $130,000 worth of productivity. It's a softer number, but it's one that we do track to make sure that we're returning a value in terms of time. Also, the occupational savings versus what you would have paid in the market by us doing some of those services that are related to occupational care saves us about $52,000. Now, as we mentioned earlier, out of their pockets, based on office visits, sixty-eight, almost $69,000 stayed in your employees' pockets. That's a significant amount of money to, to your employees on top of this benefit, as I mentioned. Prescriptions, they avoided about fourteen, almost $15,000 worth of costs. So on average, for those employees that use your health center, that's $163, almost $164 per employee that was saved, which is a, which is a very substantial benefit when you think about the costs that the folks would have out of their pockets otherwise. Now, let's turn our attention to the clinic itself. You see several icons across the top of this screen. We're looking at the utilization of just under 83% on average throughout the, throughout the year. That means that on any given day, more than eight out of 10 available appointments are used. Obviously, in winter time, that gets filled right up almost to the top, almost 95% some days when it's the cold and flu season. During the summer months, on average, it'll slow down a little bit. This year, of course, has been a little bit of anomaly as we've adapted and trying to make our capabilities and services available to employees while at the same time managing the cost associated with the health center. But with, but last year, we had over 3,000 appointments, and that's up 17%, tremendous growth. I mean, that is among some of the highest growth year over year that we've seen. It underscores the fact that the demand is there, employees enjoy it, they trust the care that they're receiving, and so that's up significantly. That's a, we added some capacity last year to meet that demand, about 15, almost 16% more capacity was added. We touched 586 individuals last year, unique people that came to us and worked with us in some capacity over the year. On the far right, you see a no-show rate of 4.7%. That's still under our threshold of 5%. On average, we'd love to be at 5% or better. And so you definitely have that. And that indicates that we're running efficiently. Let me see if you have any questions about our utilization and our capacity and access this past year. All right, Mary Lee, next slide, please. Let's dig, dig a little deeper now as we look at the health and wellness of your employees. Certainly, by providing a health center that folks can access when they don't feel well, when they have a cold or flu, or they have a need for some of the issues that were described earlier, we're happy to be there and thrilled to, to provide those services. But one of the huge benefits that is really making an impact on the long-term cost for the city is the fact that we're doing our very best to identify those highest-risk people, individuals who have chronic conditions, that if they're left untreated and not managed over time, they're going to be a real problem, not only for the employee from a quality of life perspective, but the likelihood of them having a major event from a medical point of view that will be a huge claim or set of claims to the city is what we want to try to identify and avoid. So we promote the health, annual health assessment that we, that you're very familiar with. We had 366 of those screenings this past year. This is a snapshot of the health of your employees. We had over 107%. You say, how can you have more than 107% of your people? As you've had turnover, everyone's come through, we've been able to provide that on, on a timely basis throughout the year. So we have a really good perspective on how healthy your people are and where do we have areas that we have strengths, where do we have weaknesses? If you look there on those colored bar charts on the left, the green areas, that's great news. Folks are doing well. They're healthy. They're in the exact zone of, of scores that we would like to see. Those that are in blue are kind of on the borderline, but they're doing well. And those areas that are red, those are things that we need to focus on because we do have some risk there. So we do have, as you see, some challenges as it relates to over 50%, almost 53% of your employees clinically could use some weight loss methodologies, some programs to help them reduce their obesity. If they do that, it'll drive improvements in all these other areas. Particularly, you see the third bar there, hemoglobin A1C. That's an indicator of diabetes. And so we have a real challenge of those people who are on the borderline or who are dealing with diabetes. That's a, that's a focus for us. You can also see as you come down on the left side there that we've made great improvements in recent years as it relates to blood pressure. Those scores, far fewer of those are in the red, and that's because blood pressure can be managed very aggressively and quickly under medication regimen, and that's been effective for us. So those are just a few of the areas we have focus. On the bottom right, you see a table. Every year that we conduct this annual health assessment, we find new problems that no one was aware of. So you have employees that are doing their jobs, they're driving around the, the city and other areas up there in Northeast Tennessee, and they feel fine. Maybe it's a man who's like myself in his early 50s, still feels like he might be in his 40s, but his body's telling him very soon that that's going to change, but he's not aware of it. Well, by doing this annual health assessment, cholesterol that he's not aware of comes to the forefront, or blood pressure issues that he doesn't feel. Now we've identified that. So by conducting these tests last year, we under, we identified a large number of people who were now facing problems that they did not know about and had not been diagnosed in the past. If all of these conditions were left unattended and became fully-blown conditions that needed management, we're looking at over $860,000 worth of costs that potentially could become claims for the city. Those are now being managed. They're now being addressed and treated, and we're trying to avoid those costs down the road. So that's a, a value to the city that we're monitoring and tracking for a long-term improvement basis. Let me pause and see if you have any questions at this stage.
I would comment that the other reason for the employee participation being over 100% is that some of our fire and police who do not have our health coverage obviously get their physicals there. So that drives up that employee participation number.
Very good. Thank you. Next slide. Now let's look at some people that we've been keeping an eye on for a while. We've got 291 individuals that we have test data on over a 24-month period. So we tested them in 2018. We got an assessment of their risks. We worked with them for about a year or so, and we test them again. So the natural question is, what's happening? Well, they're in the top middle. We're pleased to, to inform this group that 65 of those, 65%, almost seven out of 10 are headed in the right direction. They've either gone from the red to the green, or they've moved to the blue, which is exactly what we want to do. And that's so important for us down the road to identify and see that kind of progress. Mary Lee, if you'll click the next slide, we're going to add some data that you see on the right. So those bars that you see on the right side in the center of the page, the gray data is the individuals in the first year. The blue is the same people looked at in the second year. Now, there's two things I want to point out on this chart for you to be aware of. The first thing is you see across the top of that chart, zero to eight. Now, we, we're monitoring and testing nine different areas. And when we first began working with you back several years ago, we had people who were in the red at high risk in all nine of those areas. They were overweight, had diabetes, they had high blood pressure, high cholesterol concerns, and they smoked. And those are individuals who are extremely high, extremely high risk. Well, you look there on the far right, we don't have anybody with nine problems anymore. We've been able to reduce the list down to just eight, which is one of the key things we're targeting over time. We would like to eliminate those individuals that have six, seven, and eight, and nine risks and move them all back towards the left side of the page. Now, you do see out there, for example, those individuals that have six, those bars are far lower than those bars over to the left. So most of your individuals who are at risk have been able to, let's say they had eight or nine of those problems. Now they only have four or five. Or if they had six or seven, they've been moved over to have three or four. And by moving individuals, it takes time to do this over time, to reduce people's weight, to reduce their risk of diabetes, we're able to significantly reduce their risk. And that's our long-term goal, identify the sickest people and rush to them to help them improve rapidly. And then take the entire population and move them to a healthier state over time. And the data supports that we're in, headed in the right direction. So that's great news and a great result of the partnership together. Next slide, please. This is some feedback from your employees. We're thrilled to know that 98% would suggest the health center to their family members or coworkers. There's not a greater endorsement than that. We're thrilled at that. One other number that we track is called a net promoter score. You see that just beneath that, 98%. You see that just beneath that ninety-eight percent number, you see the number ninety-three. Net promoter score is an index that's used across multiple industries to try to determine quality levels that we can compare and, and understand if we're world-class or not. Now, you see some small print there that indicates that if you're at seventy-five or above, you're considered at world-class. And having a score of ninety-three puts the feedback from the employees at City of Bristol among the top five percent of all of our health centers nationwide. We operate over two hundred health centers, and to know that we have that level of confidence and that level of satisfaction is, is a real credit to the culture that you've created, that promotes this program, and it says volumes about the, the quality of, of the great staff that we have working there that we're so pleased to, to have to serve your employees. So, these are, this is feedback that we take seriously. We do get feedback on ways we can improve, and Jane is aggressive to try to address that quickly. Mary Lee's been super to work with as we try to improve the program, but this feedback speaks for itself, and we're very grateful for it. Let me pause now and see if you have any other questions or any comments about anything we've talked about today. The final feedback here, you listen to some of the, some of the text messages and other feedback that we receive. We've found that your employees don't hesitate to let us know if we're, have areas we need to improve on. I'm sure you've gotten feedback like that before yourselves, but we're thrilled to have some of these positive comments that, that come in on a regular basis. That's all that Jane and I have prepared for today. Any other questions or comments or feedback that we can address this morning?
I would just like to thank everyone for their time for being here. And as always, it's a two-way street, you know? Questions and answers from each other is always great. And I think, as, as you mentioned, that employees don't hesitate to, to ask the question, so that's always good.
So, I'm real pleased to see the changes because that's, we know this is a long-term project, so seeing that is fantastic. And I want to thank Mary Lee and our administrative leadership for bringing this to us initially to, to do it, and then thank y'all for your company work for everything. But Mary Lee, I know some of it is the confidence that our employees put with you and the, the work that, that you do. Also, it's just really good to see us as city council to be able to support things that are truly helpful and beneficial to their employees and their families, as well as see the economic benefit too. So, that, that's not always true, sometimes you don't see both of those at the same time. So, it's just pretty phenomenal, so appreciative.
One of the comment I would make is, I really appreciate the partnership we have with the city. Mr. Sora, Mary Lee's input, it's been, been so good to work with clients that take this so seriously. Really appreciate you, you obviously appreciate your employees, but you also, as a vendor, working with you, you hold us accountable. You, you always come up with new ideas, you challenge us, it pushes us forward. And that's, that's the kind of partnership that we enjoy most. We're able to make more difference with that kind of engagement, so thanks to Mr. Sora and Mary Lee for that, we really appreciate it.
We appreciate your staff, you have a tremendous staff, Ben, Laura, our nurse practitioner. We are getting super, super feedback across the board on her. Our employees can talk to her, they know she cares, she goes above and beyond. And you're probably getting tired of hearing me say it, but Jane Pettis treats us like we're her only client, and I know better, I know we're not. And there's many times I'm on the phone with Jane, evenings, weekends, holidays. She is always available to us to help serve our employees, and I think it's just something I'm very passionate about. And I think that the partnership, we've been able to bring people to the clinic who otherwise would not have had health care. So, thank you so much, you are a wonderful partner, we very much appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate everything you all do, and it's, it's refreshing to know that the model and the, the chart that we, that we set three years ago seems to be done tellingly nicely. And we appreciate you all's efforts to make that happen for us.
Our pleasure, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement Systems Legacy Plan, the death benefit option, Mr. Sora.
Yes, this is something that I've spoken with each of you individually about in preparation for, for this item coming up on the work session agenda. As, as, as you all are aware, we have two different retirement plans for city employees. One is the legacy plan, and that applies to employees who were employed by the city prior to January the first, twenty fifteen. And that, that entails about sixty percent of our employees. The balance of our employees, those employees who are employed after June, excuse me, January the first, twenty fifteen, are part of the hybrid plan. And there, that reflects, as the math works, about forty percent of our employees. Recently, it, it came to our attention that, under the legacy plan, at some point, the city did not elect to take what's known as an option-one death benefit. And, and the definition of that death benefit, it's not a life insurance policy, but it allows the surviving spouse of employee who, who passes away while still in active service in the city to avail themselves of the retirement benefits that would have been paid to that employee had they, had they retired, in, in, you know, prior to, prior to their, their passing. This, this, like I said, this came to our, our attention recently and, and in a pretty dramatic way. And so, we, we began to ask our TCS, TCRS representative, Justin Ball, who's on the, on the line with us and will speak to this momentarily. What are our options of addressing this for those, for those sixty percent of our employees that are part of that legacy plan? Now, on the hybrid plan, that's automatically a part of the plan. So, it's not, and it's not an elected element of this. We're going to talk with you in, in momentarily about another provision too, that's automatically a part of the, of the hybrid plan. But the, what it will cost us to implement this, this option-one death benefit is approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It is a one-time payment, this is not something that is added on an annual basis, but it is a one-time base, payment that would bring our employees in line with that benefit that our hybrid employees do currently receive. The other, the other, as we were exploring this, it also became, TCRS made us aware that we do not have for our legacy employees a line of duty death benefit. So, if you have an employee who's killed in a line of duty, whether it's through a violent act or just through an accident, their, their spouse is not eligible to participate in that benefit that they would have had. This also is extended automatically to an employee that's part of the hybrid plan. So, if, if an employee has, is, is, does incur a line of duty death, this does, this benefit would allow spouse and surviving children to, to receive over fifty percent of the benefit that that employee would have received had, had they, had they retired normally. So, it's based on their years of service and then their, their, their highest five years or sixty months of compensation. So, this is something we want to bring to your attention in talking with, with all five of you. I have recommended that, that we remedy this issue. Since I've spoken with you, it does appear that the best way to remedy this is to go ahead and satisfy the one-time payment of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I think any timeline that we would use to address this, and Justin can speak to this momentarily, any timeline that we use, the benefit would not come into play until, until that payment was satisfied. So, if we used one year, two year, whatever, to satisfy that payment, it would be one year, two year, whatever, until that benefit would, would become a reality for those legacy plan employees. So, with that, Justin, I, I've given a thumbnail sketch, can you please flesh it out for us?
Yeah, I, I think you did a wonderful job there of describing it. And, and one thing I would, I would add to that is, the, the city of Bristol came into TCRS really before TCRS consolidated. So, you know, I think nineteen fifty-one is what we're looking at in terms of coming into the retirement plan. So, at that time, there was not an automatic provision for the option-one death benefit. It wasn't automatically included in the plan, that happened at a later date. In fact, TCRS was not even consolidated until the early seventies. And so, at some point during there, option-one death benefit was added in, any, for any new employer coming in. And so, you all predate that, that's why it's not in your plan currently. And so, as Mr. Sora spoke to the hybrid plan, it is a part of that automatically, but was not for the legacy plan. So, again, it is a resolution that would have to be passed through this body in order to take effect. And as he alluded to, there's a TCA code that requires that the payment must be paid in full before it essentially does take effect. So, I think that, that's kind of the, the reasoning behind, you know, doing the lump sum payment. And, and as he mentioned, that would get you caught up, and essentially, you know, that money goes into a pool that's only used for the city of Bristol. Just like the, the money that you all pay in on each employee each month, that goes into a pool. And each year, there, of course, there's liabilities and, and assets, and as those things adjust, so does the rate. So, you know, ideally, you, you would pass this provision and not have to use it, right? That, that's the goal, nobody, you don't have an in, in-service death, nobody wants that, right? So, if you don't use it, it sits there in your pool as an asset, which can help, you know, offset future liabilities down the road as well. Then, of course, obviously, if it's used, you know, money would be pulled out of there, and it, it would be a liability at that point. But, you know, through talking with Mary Lee, it, it's not a common occurrence, thank goodness. You know, we don't have a ton of in-service deaths that happen. It does, does happen, of course, but, but fortunately, it's not that common of occurrence. So, hopefully, you know, you would pass it and it would be there for that person in, in a case like this. But, you know, ideally, you would not have to use it that often. There are a couple of stipulations in the option-one death benefit. Currently, the employee has to be there for, employed with you for, for ten years. And so, before they, they would be eligible for this. And, and I say that if you passed it, an employee that's been with you for ten years already, it is good, you know? They, they already have that service with TCRS. But they would have to be with you all for ten years, and then the way the law is written currently, they have to have their spouse listed as the beneficiary until they cross over a threshold of retirement eligibility. And then, at that point, it could be anyone. So, in legacy plan, the retirement eligibility is age fifty-five or thirty years of service, fifty-five is the early retirement age there. So, once they cross over those, they can essentially have anyone listed as their, their survivor option and get that, that payout. I always use myself as an example when, when talking about this. I've been with the state six years, so once I, you know, if I cross over my ten-year mark, then if I were to pass away, only my wife would get that. Then, once I cross my, my retirement threshold, then I could list my daughter if I wanted to. And if I were to pass away in service, she would get that, but she would not get that, have that option until I've crossed that threshold. So, from ten years until that threshold, it's only a spouse. So, that is a little bit deeper into the option-one death benefit there, just for clarification, so.
I think it's probably something we need to mention, it was written in the HR memo, that we did find that this is a benefit that our surrounding counties and cities have. We've asked about several, and Justin's looked up several for me, and those around us do have this as part of their TCRS plan.
Yeah, Mary Lee gave me a list, I forget how many were on that, but there were several surrounding your area and, and maybe similar-sized cities, and they all had the option-one death benefit. Since then, I don't know of any off the top of my head that do not have the option-one death benefit, but I've asked them to run a list, I don't have that list back yet, but hopefully, I'll have that back soon to let you all know. But off the top of my head, I, I don't know really of many or any really that, that do not have that at this point, so, most do.
I think we have Justin here to answer questions, so.
I'll just say, thank you for the explanations. And Mary Lee, I assume, I mean, we'll get confirmation, but assume that we will approve this. And then, you know, or you will be sure that, that anybody who falls in this category has their spouse listed, and make sure that everybody's up to date and properly enrolled, is that correct?
Yeah, and we annually, if not more than annually, stress how important it is to have beneficiaries on all your plans, but we'll definitely disseminate appropriate information following any action that's taken.
And how quickly could this be done, Mary Lee? I mean, if, if.
Tuesday?
Council meeting, we, we go through the process.
We'll, we'll have a resolution, assuming it's a consensus of council, we'll have a resolution before you to take action next Tuesday night on August fourth.
It's two separate resolutions for the two different pieces that we've talked about.
And then, the agency could effectively immediately put that in place?
Yeah, I think Justin spoke to that, but I think the next thing that, if we get the, understand that we need to move forward today, next thing I'll be doing is trying to, is coordinating between finance and TCRS to understand how we can quickly get funds transferred and that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, yeah, so we would invoice, send an invoice to be paid, of course, and then, once that's paid.
I would expedite that as much as we, if we can have the invoice so that Wednesday morning, that can be executed or whatever.
My goal.
Yeah.
I think everybody agrees we should do this. My question is, it's a one-time cost, is this, could this, is this considered to be a catch-up cost for us where we have not contributed in the past?
Yeah, so essentially, you, you've not, you know, had this been a part of your plan all along, it would have been a part of that percentage that you pay on each employee. And so, because that has not happened, essentially, they're catching up. Where it could potentially be a cost in the future is if it's used, you know? So, if there is a death in service, that now becomes a liability that's looked at by our actuary. So, the actuary will take a look at, at what is owed out, and that will become a part of your overall cost. Of course, you know, ideally, like I said, it's not being used that much, and, and one or two people in, in the grand scheme of a, a lot of employees, as you all have, is probably not going to make that much of a difference in, in terms of your rate if it is used, because it's spread out over many employees.
When will this become effective? Once we, of the catch-up, will it go back and cover all of the employees that are under this plan?
So, it's my understanding right now, it would be effective from the time that it is paid going forward. You know, anybody, anybody that would come into this situation after that date that the invoice had been paid, would then get them. So, a current employee, yes, you know, after this, if they were to, to pass away, y'all enacted it next Wednesday, and they were to pass away, and it was paid, and they were to pass away next Thursday, it, it would cover them.
So, it's really not a catch-up, I guess, of, per se, of, we're just going from now forward?
Yes.
My understanding was you were checking into an employee who just recently passed away, that you're checking into that benefit for that spouse, and is it definitely, that spouse is not going to be covered? Or is that spouse, are we still checking into that right now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing, there's some, according to what the TCA code says, you know, basically says that it doesn't go effective until after the amount has been paid. I, I am doing some checking to see if the resolution is retroactive and goes back to see if that would cover this employee, and still waiting to hear on that, so.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate all of the efforts on the part of Mary Lee, our staff, and of course, TCRS. So, it's a difficult situation, we're glad that we found it, but are very sorry that we found it under these circumstances. And appreciate everybody's attention and to be expeditious as possible, and hopefully, we'll have a positive conclusion for the family that is lost along the way.
Okay, anything else on this subject?
We'll have, we'll have the appropriate resolutions then, ready for you to consider formally on your August 4th agenda.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Justin, for joining.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to city council appointments, boards and commissions.
Okay, mayor, historically, we've used our work session in July. Historically, we've been able to eyeball each other. And the conversation has been a little bit easier probably around the table, as far as determining which members of council will serve on the respective boards and commissions and which council has, has a seat at the table. You have been provided electronically through board docs, the historical information that we, that we give to you, which details when the boards meet, their, their various roles that the boards entail. We've also have provided for you the resolution from, from last year, formalizing the appointments. Once we get through with the census building today, then this, then this will be considered formally at the August 4th meeting. But then lastly, in the information provided to you on board docs, we'll have the sheets where you currently serve, and then also a matrix that will indicate where, where you will serve on the respective boards in the coming year. So with that, I'm going to step back and you all do your thing.
Well, I'm going to have to have some guidance from, sure, some of the folks that's been through this a few times.
Sure, sure.
So I added up, just, other people may have too. But I know we try to divide as evenly as possible, understanding the mayor usually has bigger. But if I, for me, giving up the mayor responsibilities leaves me with two of the current, of the appointments I had. Vince, I think you had four, Chad five, Lee six, and Malin, if you keep what you have and add mayor ones, then you have eight. So I think some of it is looking at, well, it's looking overall, but particularly see if Malin can be reduced at least one or two, and then how to even out the others a little bit. So that's, that's the big picture, just to share.
So why don't, why don't we let Malin address those, those things of mayor first, and then let us backload from there?
Okay. So I think the two for sure that are supposed to be mayor, that by statute, the other reps are not voting members, are the First Tennessee Human Resources and First Tennessee Development District. And those don't, any of us could attend, but we are not voting members. And that's by statute, which would be nice if we could get that legislatively changed since municipalities are different than counties who have full-time mayors. But anyway, those are not a choice to appoint a designate.
Also to the chamber?
In the chamber, one time in the past, I served for Joel State.
Okay.
I don't know.
And you saw it said mayor. So.
Right.
Well, and Malin, you do have a term on networks. You'll begin your term as mayor on networks.
And that would put me off. So if we want to talk about that for a minute, I've been pretty heavily invested, serving on it for maybe one year, maybe not. I've served on it for two years as mayor, at least. What I would like, I think it works out best if Malin does serve, and I would support Lee to have another term. And Chad, I assume you're wanting to continue. So that would put me out. But what I would ask is support from council that I can continue with some of the regional participation, subcommittees or whatever. And also with that, might would attend when I could, some of the networks meetings to be able to keep up, but not be a voting member. So depends on wish, will of council for, for that, how that could work.
I, I think it, I think it very important. And I was going to bring this up after a while, when we get to closing comments about, you know, the regionalism effort that's being put forward and networks situation within that. I think it's really important that we get as many people, if nothing else, not participating, but listening to what's going on. Because moving forward, you know, this, this thing, regionalism thing may string out for a good number of years. And I really think it's important that we make sure that everybody knows. And I'm really thinking about Bill and Tom and April and Matt and, you know, everybody, all of our, all of our council members, you know, listen in on these conversations that are happening. Because, because there's, I don't know how to put it, but it's, it's, I think many of us don't know when there is, you know, an important session going on. With the technology of Zoom, for me, it's very easy to listen in on these conversations. I missed the one yesterday that pertained to governance of the regional, they're calling it a regional hub. I did participate this morning on the structure of the regional hub. And I'll just say that, that our, our Bristol was very well represented and very well heard of, heard from. And I think it was, I don't know how to, how anybody else wants to characterize it, but they heard us. I'll just put it to you like that. I think it's very important that the information that we, that we, that some of us know, some of us don't know, I don't know everything. But everybody gets to know those situations moving forward. And I think the only way you can do is listen into these conferences if we're allowed to, or if we're, if we know about it.
Well, I would say that of, like this morning, whoever is sending me the information of when these are going to be, I'll be happy to, when I can, to get on and listen. But I think it's of having the information to be able to get on and, and listen to some of these calls.
And I think that's part of the problem, Vince, is you didn't know about the one this morning. I should have let you know, or somebody should have let you know about that. And, you know, the one that was yesterday, I didn't know about that. I would have loved to have listened in on that. I think, I think sometimes it's, it's the case of, I don't know if we're invited or not.
Well, part, part of it, I think some, like, I didn't know about the one yesterday. I think some of it is from the committees we signed up for. But I think it would be appropriate that we ask for a list of meetings and identify what those, if it's a focus group that we are not participating, but can we be there to listen and promise that we won't participate, or that we understand that we're, why we don't get notification. But if we ask for a list of meetings and understand what the purpose of those meetings are, to try to understand the process that is being followed, conducted, whatever, I think would be something appropriate to ask for. I think.
Chad, I, go ahead, Lee.
I think we'll see some changes moving forward. And I think that, that what has been requested is absolutely appropriate. I think this morning, we made it very clear that we value our professional staff and have been somewhat surprised that our professional staff is not at the forefront of this. We are not professional economic developers. We are not professional marketing developers. But we are the beneficiary stakeholders that are making those decisions and that we rely on our professionals to keep us informed so that we can make those positive decisions. And transparency is huge through a lot of this. It was brought to our attention well that our economic developers had been invited to a meeting two weeks ago, but that's two years after the process has begun. And that's a little late to the dance. So Chad, I think your points are very well made. I think that, yes, I do think we were able to, to share a lot of information that perhaps had not been thought about just yet. From a perspective of a community that has spent the past 20 years diligently embedded in economic development, we have hired, we have had a hired economic developer for the past 20 years. We've been a member of Networks, another realm of economic development. We now have three dedicated economic developers within the Bristol, Tennessee system. April leads at BTS, along with Tom Anderson and Matt Garland, and not to mention John Luttrell in our Department of Community Relations, all doing marketing and economic development. So Bristol has a longstanding history of being in the forefront of economic development. And I think that that was heard this morning, which is why we have the results that we have. So yes, I completely agree that if, if we are aware, and Margaret, to your point, I think we need to ask for those specific dates to be shared. And, and we need to be present. But just as importantly as we need to be present, our staff needs to be present and our economic, professional economic developers and John Luttrell needs to be present.
I would add to, to another reason, sorry, sorry, mayor. Another reason for our staff to be involved is that we, as elected officials, come and go. Some of us are here longer than others so far. But, but our staff is what, who are constant, and they weather it all the way through. So it is critical that they're part of the conversation and can continue that after, after we move on or whatever. Sorry, Malin.
That's okay. I mean, I totally agree. We definitely got their attention today. And, and I think it was well received by them in some ways as well.
So going back to, so we're not quite going how we intended. But if we kept Networks the same with Lee and Chad, and then Malin added as mayor, and y'all are okay with my continued participation as, as I can.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yay.
Most definitely. Also, too, I wanted to mention real quick, also, I started off on my, but I wanted to mention also too, that, so in this conversation, just so that, especially Malin and, and Vince realizes that the way, the way things are structured right now, for instance, Kingsport has their mayor that serves on, on Networks. And then they have three appointed folks that are really in the business community. We have, and then we have Sullivan County that has the mayor and one county commissioner, and then I think three outside business agencies, or let me say, outside people that are in the business world, that are appointed by the mayor. The mayor, my question to you is, is we have three council members that serve. Should we have, I always want, I'm opening this up for discussion, and please, Tom, Bill, everybody chime in. Should one of those positions be someone from our business community? Or are we represented well enough? I know, you know, Jerry Caldwell's on there from Bristol. We have.
Jerry's from Sullivan County.
Well, well, but he's, he represents Bristol. And then we also have, help, help me, who else is, who else?
David Wagner.
David.
David Wagner.
You're on.
Yeah.
Now you're muted.
Am I muted now?
No.
No, you're good.
You're good.
Mark Vance is from Bristol, representing Sullivan County as the commissioner. Carolyn Farrell. And Carolyn, actually, I know we have a provision that we can serve two terms back to back. Carolyn, I believe, asked Sullivan County mayor if she could extend for another term, and she was granted that was an exception. And so for me to be able to serve, if that's the direction we want to go, it would have to be with an exception and the approval of council.
Well, my opinion is, Lee, you do need to serve, if we can. If we, if we can make that, I think you've got the most experience on the board, especially with everything going on. I definitely think you should serve if you can. And I want to serve. I think I probably should. But I think to your point right there, is we have a lot of Bristol representation on that board. So I'm fine with that. But you think it, that would have to be an exception for you to serve?
Danielle would need to address that.
Well, the bylaw states that you can have two terms of three years each, and then you have to be removed from the board for a year before you can be reappointed. And so I don't know, there's no provision in the bylaws for an exception to that. I guess that the exception could be approved by all of the participating entities. But I, this is the first I've heard of somebody ask, or getting an exception to serve in a different term after they've served their two consecutive terms.
So we need to clarify that.
Yes, I think it would be good to find out what it's, where they're, where this is coming from.
Right.
Because otherwise, bylaws permit it.
Right. So if Carolyn Farrell got an exception, and then if we wanted an exception for, and I do know we did just go through a process, because there were some folks appointed from Sullivan County who were beyond that. We had not kept up with our, Bristol was the only one who had kept up with the current appointments following bylaws. So I would say we do need to follow that up to see what, what the scoop is. So.
If I could suggest then, we will, we will research that. We'll leave it as, as you all have it selected at this point. And then if we need to, at a later time, come back and revisit it, if we find that there's a, that there's a reason to do that, we can't, we can't go forward in the fashion that you've suggested, that we can go back and revisit it.
I think that's great. And I'm fully in agreement with that.
Can that mayor appointee be one of our council members?
Yes.
Yeah, that's actually what it is, Malin. The.
Well, I'm, without having to go.
No.
No, you can, council member, and then you, well, I guess the mayor could.
Danielle.
The mayor can appoint two people, one of whom has to be a council member, but the other one can also be a council member. And I think historically, been three counts, the mayor and two council members on Networks.
We have in the past, I actually appointed Jack, who was the vice mayor at the time, to the Networks Board so that he could serve two years consecutive. Or so, I don't think the mayor has to serve, but has to at least appoint somebody to serve in his place. Is that not correct?
The mayor has to serve. The mayor has to then, can appoint two additional members, one of whom must be another city council member, and one of whom could be anybody. But historically, I think this board has appointed other city councils.
It's not too long a history. We went through, yeah, it, it was just a few years ago with looking at the makeup and the direction of Networks and some pretty in-depth discussion and feeling like we needed more public government representation. So that's what's said to that.
So we're probably at a position where it's just best for Danielle to do the research and let us.
And also Danielle, of, of the fact of, of serving on the board, does it, does it say that if you're serving on the board as a member of council for two terms, or is, does it matter whether you're on council or if you're a private citizen and would be to the board? Is it just two terms, no matter what your title is?
Good point.
As I read.
Go ahead, Danielle. You interpret the bylaws. That's your role.
Right.
As, as I read it, it says, a person serving two consecutive terms of three years each on the Board of Directors must hold no position on the Board of Directors for a period of at least one year before being again appointed to the board. And so I don't think that it matters. think that it matters why you were on the board, whether you were appointed as a private citizen, or served because you were a, a council member. You, you can have two terms.
Presumably, presumably the mayor can have unlimited if they continue serving in that mayor role.
As long as they're mayor, their term continues for that time.
Right. Gotcha.
Let's say we look for, you know, the fact if we can get the exception, then that's what we need to do.
And I appreciate y'all's willingness to do that. But however it turns out, I'm agreeable. Okay.
Okay.
So what else does Malin have? Malin, are you still?
Still here. Currently, I serve on the Planning Commission.
I think that's a good place to serve if you want to continue there. Do you want to continue on the Planning Commission?
I mean, I've, I've enjoyed that and learning a lot from it.
I do think that we need to look at where Vince will be plugged in as vice mayor so that once he steps into the role of mayor, he is ready to go. So-
I would, I mean, and Margaret has told, I do not care either way of, I've enjoyed everything that, where I am now on the sewer, and I, if, Margaret, if you're, if you're wanting to be on planning, but if you would consider swapping planning and the library board of, I would do that. But if, it's, it's up to you if, if you're, if you're wanting to do that.
I would like to continue. Also, I think when we look at it, balance out, and we know some of our, some of our committees have more significant roles or whatever than others, and trying to divide those up also between council members too. Anyway, I would like to stay on planning also. I wanted to have, either now or in the future, some discussion about for our board appointees to set some, you know, what are our goals as we look, not, not just at ourselves, but to everybody, for what kind of skills, are we looking for skill sets? Are we looking for representation so that it's broad representation? What are some of the things that we're looking at? And I'm saying that now because our Planning Commission, right now I'm the only woman on the Planning Commission. And I think that perspective of diversity is critical. So I would like to continue partly because of that as well. So, but I do agree, it's great experience. So Vince, I think, looking toward next year, whether you're in as mayor next year or the following year, that, that's when we should look at, at your moving into that role, if, if not this year.
Well, with that said, if, I mean, of looking, I would, having the first year of, in you, where I am as far as the sewer oversight, the library board, the power board, and then also as the representative for the school system, that-
Are you good with all those stance?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's worked out well for me as far as the scheduling and so forth. So if everyone else is in agreement with that, then that's, I would like to continue with.
Why don't we say yes now, and then we'll see if it needs to be switched around depending-
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
Chad, are you with the IDB, or what, what do you want to do, Chad?
Well, I, I do, I do like the IDB. It does fit with my schedule as well. And I also think that someone serving on the Networks Board should serve on the Industrial Development Board. I think those two tie together. So I'll, I would like to go ahead and do the Industrial Development Board currently as, as, as we have the networks set up, and assuming everything goes forward with the networks. But I'll say it again, I'll say that also too, is, you know, maybe next year, Vince, think about the IDB Board. You know what I mean? Just because that's a good, you can learn, I mean, it kind of ties in with, you know, with the networks and, and-
And I mean, if, unless you want to, if you want to continue with that, then-
I'll, I'll, I'll do it again, I'll do it again for this year, but that'd be a good board for you to be on, or Malin, either one. Actually, Malin, that would work for Malin as well. You guys can talk about it, maybe think about it for next year. I'd, I'd like to do it another year, I think, since I'm going to be serving on Networks, but both of those, I mean, but, but, but both of you, that could be a good board for, for either of you guys, get a little, you know, get that end of things.
Chad, are you going to continue on with Bristol, Virginia?
I, I can unless somebody else wants it.
I'll be right-
Right. Does anybody else want it? And Malin, would you be, as mayor, the liaison to Sullivan County? Do you want to continue on? Who's going to do that?
Lee, it was the two of us. I did it well when we were in person. I have not done well since, Margaret.
It's been kind of hit, yes. But I think it's nice for our mayor to have that presence. And then Margaret, if you want to do backup like I did, or if you want me to do backup, I don't mind. But I think it's really important for our mayor to have presence. And I know, Margaret, oftentimes you would go to the podium and say hello and let them know we were there. And I think that's important, and, and to really facilitate that hand in glove relationship with the commission. But whomever would like to do that?
I know Malin has gone quite a few times for whatever reasons too. But yeah, I think when we look, Malin, you're going to need to look at a few things for not doing, which right now, I think Malin's doing the train station. That's one he could probably give up. Also-
I can go to the train station, Malin, if that would relieve you.
Well, Lee, you're going to have to give up something too, because you're at six.
But I'm, I'm going to give up a few. Malin, do you want me to go to the train station, or would you prefer to stay? You're muted.
You're muted.
You're more than welcome.
And I think the other options for Malin to reduce are Parks and Rec and the sewer oversight. Does it have to be the mayor, Mr. Sora?
No, ma'am, it does not.
Right.
It, it, it is mayor, and a mayor and a member, but the mayor can appoint.
A designated, right. So-
Yeah. I mean, that one, it, it doesn't meet-
Right, it's quarterly.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem standing on that. I think Vince and I both have learned a lot on that one. We, we've still got to get down and do our plant tour. We've not done that yet.
Vince, are you good with that?
With the sewer oversight, yes.
Are you good with the library board to hang out one more year?
I am.
He already said his four.
All four. I'm just trying to do that. And Vince, you're going to do the school board?
When does the Park and Rec Board, Park and Rec Board meet?
Um-
In a second, I'll, I'll pull that out. It's on the second Thursday, I believe it is.
Terry's on, he could fill in. I think they went to every other month.
Yeah, it is, it is an every other month. Hang on just-
Yes.
I'll get to that.
That's, that's-
Every other month at 6:00 PM. First Thursday, every other month, 6:00 PM.
What else you got, Lee, that you want to get out? I, I don't know if that's going to work for me or not. That's Thursday for me.
I want to, I'm the development chair this year for the BCM, so I do want to stay on the BCM, and Rhythm and Roots, and Believe in Bristol, and CVB. Because that, that's all a whole nother realm of economic development, isn't it? And, and so, and to know what they're doing collaboratively and how they're all working together, I think it's proven to be an advantage.
So Malin's going to serve on the Sullivan County Commission as the liaison there, right? Or, or are you doing that, man?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can be first backup, and Lee can be if, or anybody else can be backup.
I'm on the Home Consortium. So I, I've done that for a year, and I think I should stay on that for another year. CVB, what, Lee, you've been doing that one. I kind of felt like that tied into the Birthplace of Country Music and-
I'll hang out there a little bit longer, and if we need to make some changes, we can always do that.
All right.
Is that okay?
Malin, do you want to serve on the Chamber Board, or is that something you want to give up? Have you been serving on that board?
I've been on the CVB Board for about three plus years.
But I mean, one of the ones I see a hole in there is, is the Chamber Board.
I just think that it's important for our mayor to be on that board.
Okay.
Virginia's mayor is on that board, and, and, you know, I think there are some situations where the presence of our mayor is important, and I think that's one of them.
Okay.
What about the, the Hospital Board, Malin, you've served on, is that one you can continue? We're going to add up how many Malin has here in a minute.
Yeah, I've just reappointed.
Oh, that's right, because that was-
It was just an interim position I've just appointed for that.
And we just recommend for that. We don't appoint. So-
Margaret, how many do I have? I'll take Parks and Rec.
No, but, but Lee, I have one.
Then you need to take Parks and Rec.
Right. Right. Yeah. I mean, I, not, I have two counting Sullivan County Commission, but, yeah, so-
Margaret's slacking on us. Load her up.
Not slacking. Margaret's varied in other directions.
So, no, I'm willing to serve, but it's, you know, it depends on what people are doing and preferences and all that. But, yeah.
What do we have left? We have-
Oh, I was, I've been on that Homeland Security thing there, there too, as well.
Lee is still wanting Rhythm and Roots.
Yeah. And that's because Rhythm and Roots works hand in glove with the BCM. And so-
Do we want the Airport Commission? Do we want to keep Bill?
Yep.
Bill's serving on Airport Commission, correct?
And the MPO. I think he's MPO also.
That's what I have served, yes.
Okay.
And it's really great, I think, to have Bill on both of those. It, it, it's non-politicized. It's, it's, it's staff, it's very straightforward, it's very perfect. And Bill serves as treasurer of the Airport Commission. Is that correct, Bill, or secretary?
Secretary.
Secretary of the Airport Commission.
And-
It does give me a seat on their executive board, and that's, that's an advantage for Bristol.
Right.
Right.
Also, I assume any of those we can, any of us can attend at any point. At least the full board, maybe not the exec committee.
Where do we stand now? Are we, is everything cut, do we have X's in all the boxes?
You say, Lee, on Rhythm and Roots, you're there.
I'm there.
Okay.
So you'll add them up and see where we are, just to see how far off we are on stuff. I'm not adding.
Vince, you was on the school board, right?
Yes.
Chad was staying on Bristol, Virginia.
So Malin, you have one, two, I can't see the, or, you're at eight.
Tara, are you adding these up?
Or Tim might be.
Tim has them.
Okay.
I can read it all for Adam, whichever way you want to do.
What's the total, Tim? Do you know what the totals are, just so we know that?
Okay, so Margaret, you have currently two.
It should be three.
What's the, I don't-
Sullivan County Commission, is that, it's me and Malin.
Oh, there's two of them all.
Yeah.
Just has it listed as one.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's three for Margaret. Chad, you have, let me get down here, one, two, three, four, five. Chad, you have five. Malin, you're on one, two, three, four.
I've got eight for Malin.
For Malin, yes. Lee, you have one, two, three.
Looks like six.
Seven. Seven for Lee, Vince, one, two, three, four. Four for Vince, and two for Bill.
So Lee, do you have one that you would?
Who, who was on the Parks and Rec? I missed checking that off.
Me, me.
Okay.
So Lee, Malin may not be able to give any up, but Lee, whether to balance out, if there's anything you're on that-
Um-
If Lee doesn't have anything, Margaret, would you want to do the library board?
That I do?
I mean, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm happy to do it.
Something, so you would do something else if Lee's got something else, or you would-
I don't know what Lee has, but if there's something that Lee-
How about the train station? Would, Vince, would you be willing to do the train station? It's a great board, and it meets in the morning at 8:00.
What, what days would?
On Wednesday.
Yeah, last Wednesday at 8:30, actually.
The last Wednesday of the month?
Yeah.
At 8:30.
Tim, I think you said you had counted seven for Lee. On my, on my chart, I only have six. Have I, have I missed one?
Uh, leaving off for Networks, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Birthplace of Country Music, Train Station Foundation, leaving Bristol, Rhythm and Roots.
I think that's just six.
Okay, six.
I want to make sure I hadn't missed anything.
Yeah, sorry about that. Just-
That's okay.
And Vince, I'm happy to do library board, but if you took something else on, I'm happy to do it.
Well, since you only, what do you have, Margaret? Three?
I have three, you have four. So if I got library board, you'd have three, I'd have four. So anyway, whatever is fine.
Yeah. If you want, I mean, I could probably, does the last Wednesday? Is the Wednesday hour, do they meet once a month?
Yes. So frequently, it would be the morning after our council, our work session on Tuesday, but I'm not, if there's a fifth Wednesday.
I could probably, I can probably do that.
What, question is, what, Malin needs, needs to get rid of a couple?
If he can. A lot of them, we wanted him to do.
So read through ones.
You want me to read through each line?
Do you want me to read through, Tim, what I have, and we'll make sure we're both have, we have the same, the same sheet?
Sure.
For Planning Commission, I have Margaret and Malin. For Sewer Oversight, I have Malin and Vince. For the Library Board, I have Vince. For the Power Board, I have Vince. For Networks, we have Chad, Malin, and Lee. I'll continue to serve on the, on the MPO. I have Chad for Industrial Development Board. I have Margaret for Parks and Recreation Commission. We have Vince for School Board. We have Chad for Bristol, Virginia. We have Malin and Margaret for the Sullivan County Commission. I've got Chad with Home Consortium. Lee with CVB. Malin with the First Tennessee Human Resources Agency. Malin with First Tennessee Development District. Birthplace of Country Music is Lee. Train Station Foundation is Lee. And check me on that. Y'all were having some conversation.
Go ahead and finish, and then we'll change.
Okay. BRMC Community Board is Malin. Believe in- Believe in Bristol is Lee. Chamber of Commerce is Maelyn. Homeland Security District One is Chad. Rhythm and Roots is Lee, and then I'll serve on the Airport Commission.
I'm at that.
I think for Maelyn, the only one really he could give up is sewer oversight.
I think as far as that, sewer oversight, we meet quarterly. We generally will have one of those meetings that we defer just for lack of agenda items. It's not an overly cumbersome board if, if Maelyn enjoys serving on the, on that board.
Right.
Well, you know, I enjoyed sewer, sewer oversight and it meets early in the morning, three times a year.
Three or four.
That.
Uh, Lee, you're supposed to be reducing your numbers, so you can't do it.
I know, I know, but I have, I have, I have a lot more, I have flexibility that maybe.
I know, you can't do it, you have six. So, I mean, I can do it, but also if it's not that big a deal, Maelyn can continue.
Well, Margaret, if you want to do the library board, the one thing that I have a issue, like with the library board of that, with the, because I guess of being on the library board, then there's, there's also the finance committee.
Right.
I haven't been able to.
Do that one, right.
And so, you know, I feel like sometimes that I've not, so if you want to do that, and then I would take the, if Lee want to.
Give up train station.
Want to give up the train station, I would take that.
Right.
If you're okay. Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And I think Lee served on train station, I have, uh, Maelyn has, so that gets another council member to serve on train station. Also, just, some of these are going to be hard service this next year because of COVID and what it's done to finances, it's going to be some tough times, so.
Is the train station meeting in person or they meet Zoom now, Lee?
They're going to be zooming tomorrow.
Okay.
And tomorrow, Maelyn, you're still on till, till we vote on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
And the library's been Zoom.
Okay.
And I perceive that the, the train station been Zoom for a while.
Yeah.
I have five now, is that correct?
That's what I have for you.
Okay, great.
Scroll that down a little bit, Tim, let me double check that, let me double check my list.
I have five for also.
Okay, okay. Okay. Can I read through them again and make sure, are, are, are we through, are we through balancing?
Yeah, if, we'll see what, as you read through, but I have the, Vince and I have four, Chad and Lee have five, and Maelyn has eight. So that's, that's pretty good balance with always understanding the mayor's going to have more than the rest of us.
Right. Yeah, and I'm, and I'm retired, I'm more flexible as well.
You go for it, Maelyn.
Okay, for Planning Commission, I have Margaret and Maelyn. For Sewer Oversight, I have Maelyn and Vince. For Library Board, I have Margaret. For Power Board, I have Vince. For Networks, I have Chad, Maelyn and Lee. For MPO, I'll continue to serve. For the IDB, I have Chad. For Parks and Rec, I have Margaret. For School Board, I have Vince. For City of Bristol, Virginia, I have Chad. For Sullivan County Commission, I have Margaret and Maelyn. For Home Consortium, I have Chad. For CVB, I have Lee. For First Tennessee Human Resources, I have Maelyn. For First Tennessee Development District, I have Maelyn. For Birthplace of Country Music, I have Lee. For Train Station Foundation, I have Vince. For BRMC Community Board, I have Maelyn. For Believe in Bristol, I have Lee. For Chamber of Commerce, I have Maelyn. For Homeland Security, I have Chad. For Rhythm and Roots, I have Lee, and I'll continue to serve on the Airport Commission.
Bill, did you have me, was I moved to Sewer Oversight or is Vince still there?
Right now, I have Maelyn and Vince. If you all want, want to move, let me know, it's as easy as, it's the easiest changing.
That gives Vince four.
Okay.
He hadn't served before, right?
Correct, no, he has.
No, I'm on those.
You're currently on it, you're still on it, right, you stay on it.
If, if Lee, and Maelyn was saying that if, if Lee was willing to take that and take one off of Maelyn.
Yes.
If Maelyn wanted to do that.
He said he was happy to do it, I think.
Yeah, I'm good with doing that, that sewer meeting, I mean, it's, it's not a big deal, it's early in the morning.
Red letter day, fighting over the sewer oversight, Bill, you should be so proud of us.
Great biscuits.
Oh, my God.
It's the biscuits.
I am so impressed.
Biscuits and coffee at the sewer oversight, and that, that sewer.
Keep your windows up as you're driving in.
Vince, you and I cannot go off that board until we do that plant tour. Okay, is that, is that, is that the final format?
Yes.
I think we're good.
Okay. All right. Okay.
That wasn't too painful.
No, it was a piece cake. Okay, um, like, next on the agenda, it's 2020 General Assembly Legislative Update. Yes, uh, this is, this is the time of year where our city attorney provides a presentation to city council on legislative acts that were approved by the 2020 General, Tennessee General Assembly that, and the acts may have, may have an impact on local government. So, uh, while there were a number of these, Danielle will focus on those that, that, that are most significant for council to be aware of. Danielle?
Yes, sir.
Do you think you could have gotten my print any smaller?
Well, it's bigger, Tim is going to do my PowerPoint and so we just need to get it started.
No, I'm in on our handout.
Oh, on the handout, yes, that was, well, there's a lot of information to put in there, I tried to make it as big as I could, but um.
Which, before you start, just to say, this is extraordinarily important and helpful and it's something that in the way past, we did not do annually. And I think occasionally some things were missed or whatever, so. Um, and it looks like it's fairly tedious, but thank you very much, so.
You're welcome, it's, it's not as tedious as it has, as it could be, because the Secretary of State does a great job of um, keeping a website that has every public chapter that, as it is enacted, um, and gives you the status. So, uh, that's a, that's a really helpful resource so that I can send that to you if you want to ever look at that yourselves. Um, Tim, you're at the back of my presentation, could we go back to the start? Now you've had a quick preview. Uh, so 2020 was a very short session, Tim, if you'll go to the next slide. Because of COVID, the legislature convened on January fourteenth and then suspended on March nineteenth. They reconvened on June first until they adjourned again on June nineteenth. You can see the impact of the COVID nineteen extension in the number of bills that were actually enacted into law. Um, where in two thousand nineteen, there were five hundred and eighteen public chapters, and two thousand twenty, there were only two hundred and ninety-two. So as a result, today's presentation is going to be much quicker than it sometimes is, so let's go to the next slide. This is a bill that was actually passed by the House and Senate in two thousand nineteen and was meant to take effect on July first of two thousand nineteen. But it was not signed into law by the governor until March tenth, two thousand twenty. Uh, Public Chapter five twenty-nine gives local governments the authority to ban smoking, but not vaping on the grounds of playgrounds. And so playground is defined in the act as um, an indoor-outdoor facility that's intended for the recreation of children and is owned by the local government. Smoking is the burning of tobacco, hemp, or other drug or substance. It is specifically, uh, defined so as not to include vaping. If city council wants to enact such a ban, that has to be passed by a two-thirds vote of the legislative body, which in the case of our city council is four members of the five members. Um, this legislation, I think, is something that, it was cosponsored by Senator Lundberg, and I think it's one of, an example of one of the issues that the tri-cities have asked for more local, local control. Um, currently, state law really preempts local control of smoking. And the tri-cities have annually during the legislative session, asked for more local control. And so this is a piece where we're getting a little bit of local control back. Um, if you wish to, to move forward with that, that's something that we can explore in terms of drafting ordinance and getting that, getting that in place.
But we, but we cannot.
Question, on the vaping not being included, was there any reasoning behind that, or?
You know, I don't know, I, I could look for the reasoning behind that, but that's not plain from the face of the act and I don't do a whole lot of digging into why. Um, but I, I think that this act went through a fair amount of negotiation. And so I think that's probably where the details really get hammered out, is with various factions asking for various things. Uh, you know, but it is, that's, it's only smoking of tobacco products, not vaping them.
Hmm, okay, just curious, like.
Yeah, just also, this is something that the um, Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition, I think, has asked for, for um, some of that was whether they should ask for Sullivan County only or whatever, and I think worked with legislators some on it as well, so. Just FYI.
It ended up applying to all, all local governments, not just to Sullivan County, but that was part of the debate that last year. All right, so if no more questions, let's go to the next slide. So, uh, with that smoking act, they, they gave us a little bit of local control and this act really pulled back a little bit of local control. Um, during the lockdown, the governor's executive orders, uh, one of the things that, that the governor accomplished through executive order was allowing curbside pickup for most um, permit holders, beer permit holders, regardless of what local were at the say on that topic. Uh, the legislature has now enacted, um, NPC seven oh four, curbside pickup of beer statewide. So if you have a beer permit, you are authorized to sell beer from your own inventory online for pickup in a paved parking area adjacent to the business. This is kind of regardless of what a local ordinance might have to say. Um, it doesn't distinguish between on premises or off premises permits, but there's nothing in here that repeals or, or affects the open container law. So my reading would be that the permit holder is only permitted to sell sealed containers unless maybe there's a passenger, I mean, that'd be pretty unwise to sell an unsealed container of alcohol to passengers in a car, but that's something that is going to have to be kind of worked out, because this didn't really, uh, this act did not really explain how that was supposed to work. Um, it does say that there's got to be a paved parking area adjacent to the business, so it's got to be um, right there versus, you know, somebody walking across the street to deliver beer or anything like that. Somebody has to confirm that the recipient is age twenty-one years or older before they can make the sale. All right, next slide. Deals with public records. Um, Public Chapter seven thirty-eight makes the destruction of a public record that is the subject of a current record request, an offense punishable by a fine up to five hundred dollars. The fine is levied against the government, governmental entity itself, rather than against an employee or representative of the government, governmental entity. Uh, what this means basically is that you have to make sure that there is no um, current records request before you destroy records. You can accomplish that by talking to the public records request coordinator for your governmental entity. In the case of the city, that's me, um, usually we can figure out whether there's a pending public records request. We don't usually have a pending public record, so this probably may not impact us that much. From a record keeping standpoint, we actually have to keep copies of the requests and associated correspondence for twelve months minimum. And again, I don't think this is a practical problem for us, because we're already doing that as a city, but I did want to make you aware of the fact that there's actually going to be teeth now if there's a failure to respond to a public records request because you've destroyed the records. Going to the, oh, sorry.
Danielle?
Yes.
So before we delete an email, do we need to call you and ask you if it's okay?
You know, I would. Let's say no, because that would be, I don't think anybody would be able to get everything, anything done. Um, there are a lot of things to go through with the question of when you delete records. We have a records maintenance or a records retention policy. So, um, really, before you're deleting emails, you need to kind of think, is this a record that I need to maintain? Um, what probably I would do, if you're worried about, you know, cleaning up things, is you can just call me and I'll tell you, no, there's nothing open, and so go for it. It practically speaking, Vince, if there's a records request for records that you have, I will have told you about it already, because I will have had to come to you to say, do you have any records? And then once that records request has been fulfilled, then as long as it's not a record that needs to be maintained according to our records retention policy, it's something that you can get rid of, uh, you know, if permitted by the policy. So. Okay, so moving on to short-term rentals.
Yeah, is that Airbnb?
Yes.
All right.
Now, so this is occupancy taxes on Airbnb. So there've been a few different Airbnb or pieces of legislation affecting Airbnb in the last few years. Uh, I think two years ago, we had the um, kind of limitations on how much cities could regulate Airbnbs, but this is actually imposing an occupancy tax on short-term rental unit marketplaces, which seems, appears to be things like Airbnb and others that take the payment for short-term rental units. So Airbnb actually collects money from people and distributes it to the property owners. Um, Airbnb and others like that will now have to collect occupancy taxes when they rent a unit in the state of Tennessee. Metro governments are authorized to deal with these things directly. Smaller jurisdictions are going to be dealing with the Department of Revenue, where the marketplaces will collect the tax, send it to the Department of Revenue, and the Department of Revenue will distribute the tax on a monthly basis to the local governing bodies where the rent, where it's are located. Um, DOR gets to keep a one and a quarter percent administrative fee, as they do with most of what they distribute to the local governments. The city is going to have to certify annually what our occupancy tax is. Um, there are a couple of other things that were in this act, but they're not really as useful for, for city purposes. I think the best part about this act is that we may see a little bit of revenue coming in, depending on how many Airbnbs we have in the city. That will become effective on January first, twenty twenty-one. So then really, oh, sorry.
Question, if you go back, for assessed local governments to certify annually to DOR what their occupancy tax is, are you, is that referencing a tax or a total amount collected?
Um, I believe that's referencing the tax rate. And so we'll have to let them know, you know, whatever our tax rate is, if, they'll develop a form that we'll have to fill out annually.
And what is our current?
Five percent.
Five percent.
Five percent, yes, ma'am.
Is that in line with everyone else in the tri-cities and Bristol, Virginia?
It, uh, I think Kingsport is at seven. And Johnson City is maybe seven, seven point five, so we're, we are at least two percentage points below either Johnson City or Kingsport. Bristol, Virginia has an occupancy tax of nine percent. Uh, I think if you look at, at the cost of a room, since we're nine and a quarter, they're five and a quarter, they're nine on occupancy, we're five on occupancy. The, the cost of a room is roughly taxed out at the same, but the occupancy tax itself is significantly larger in Bristol, Virginia than Bristol, Tennessee.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on, we've got just a few others that sort of odds and ends. The, um, this is something that you will probably see at some point in the future. The Billboard Regulations and Control Act was held unconstitutional a couple of years back on the basis that it discriminated on the basis of the content of billboards or signs. So the Tennessee Legislature has largely rewritten the act and um, changed the definition of on-premises device so that it doesn't rely on the content of the device. Uh, made a few other changes. Uh, my expectation is that planning staff will be talking to the Planning Commission about the changes that have been made in the Billboard Regulation and Control Act and that there may be some changes that come out of the Planning Committee to you in order to conform to the new act or to, to kind of take advantage of some of the definitions that the act has, has put into place. Uh, the next item is that August eighteenth has been officially designated as Women's Suffrage Day each year, so that's a reminder to celebrate each year.
Yay.
Um, the third item that, that you are um, probably very, very excited about is that you are not, you are no longer allowed to ban livestock exhibitions, local governments are not, um, even though you can regulate them, so you can, are specifically allowed to regulate them as to time, place, and to regulate them as to time, place and manner. Uh, just in case you guys are concerned about that. Uh, it's an interesting thing because basically if someone says they want to have livestock exhibition, then you can't really do a whole lot about it. It's an example of one of those areas where local control gives way to the state deciding um, how things are going to be handled. And finally, uh, the Bristol Motor Speedway has been designated as a sports authority facility, which can get a permit from TABC for purposes of the sale of alcoholic beverage. Um, generally, the ABC permits are for liquor, wine and or high gravity beer. And that's for on premises consumption. Uh, that was an act that that probably is just going to make it a lot easier for the Speedway to to operate and allows them to sell a wider variety of um, beverages during their events.
So does that change their status in any other way to be a for sports authority?
No, it is, as as I read this, it's just for purposes of the of the alcohol statutes, not any other purposes. The the liquor by the drink statute um, has an incredibly complicated definition section where um, really individual organizations and and entities are are described and given the power to apply for a permit. Uh, it goes on for pages and pages. So this is just adding to that definition section. All right, moving to the next slide. Just to update you on some legislation that we've talked about a lot, uh, House Bill twenty seven seventy six, which is Senate Bill twenty six six three, would have defined the terms economic development and project to include incentives for the development of single life, would have it to, excuse me, I got myself tongue tied, to include the promotion of single family housing as a project or an incentive for purposes of IDBs. This passed in the House, but it did not make it out of the Senate Finance Ways and Means Committee. And so my understanding is that it's basically dead now and it has to be reintroduced in the next session. Um, the next thing that was interesting, I think, this year, there was a private act passed that I think was is interesting for everybody who lives in Sullivan County. It was covered in the news um, earlier in the spring that Sullivan County was asking for this private act, and it did pass. It uh, enacts the Sullivan County Financial Management System of 2020 Act. It takes Sullivan County out of the nineteen fifty seven County Finance Act and gives them an act that's really designed for their needs. It is not effective until it's approved by a two thirds vote of the county commission. And that, to my knowledge, that hasn't happened yet, but I imagine it'll be put to a vote fairly soon. Um, it creates a consolidated finance department and a central purchasing department. It gives oversight to a county financial management committee, and it establishes a budget calendar and probably has a lot more impacts that I have not delved into very well, but but I think it's worth knowing about.
So that sounds like a real positive to add a little more structure to our Sullivan County processes. So to me, that's what it looks like.
The news coverage of this act when it was when it was initially proposed was the commissioners were were pretty positive about how it would help them. Uh, you know, streamline the county's finances and also it would bring the school systems finances more into the same calendar as the rest of the county. So are there any questions on that or any of the other facts? And like I say, there's about eighty other things that I covered for staff. If anybody has any questions on any of those, I'd be happy to discuss it. But these were the things that I cherry picked as being of more interest to you all specifically.
Okay, no other questions. We'll move on to the next agenda. Uh, city manager comments.
Let me get unmuted here. Um, the first first item on the agenda, we as a staff are anticipating the um, the August fourth meeting to be a virtual meeting. So if if you if council is thinking differently, please let us know. Um, and we'll uh, and we'll we'll respond accordingly.
That was good.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's consensus to counsel is make that a virtual meeting then on our
Yes.
Our business meeting. Okay. All right. The the next item on the agenda, I sent all of you or forwarded you all an email from Beth Reinhardt with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce regarding the Convention Investors Bureau appropriation agreement. Uh, they have not signed and returned the agreement. Uh, but they they are, according to her email, she would like an opportunity and their executive board would like to have an opportunity to discuss the agreement uh, in a in a party with the executive board, the city council of Bristol, Tennessee, and the city county, city council of Bristol, Virginia. And she was requesting potential dates and times in which uh, a meeting could occur to to address their concerns or comments.
Bill, I'd like to, as as far as this goes, if we could, I know in that email, there was questions about that they had questions about the appropriations agreement and from their attorneys. So can we find out what those questions are and then have those forwarded to you and Danielle and and look at those questions? So prior to this meeting, we know what they're, you know, what the concerns are and that we can all look at on prior to the meeting that of just going into the meeting blind that we, you know, I would ask for, you know, reach out to them, find out what their concerns are, forward those to you, and Danielle can look at them, and then um, we can schedule the meeting. That would be.
Yeah, I think um, that some of it, um, some of it is just clarification. So it the I think the big picture is where they want to have that, you know, there's disagreement for the big picture, but I think there's questions if what does it mean by this or what does it mean by that? I think those need to be clarified and then we can identify what are the, what are the um, stuff that constitutes the big questions that um, that aren't satisfied by going, oh, we intended to say this, y'all are interpreting that. So we just need.
Actually, it'd be more productive meaning if uh,
Right.
we can be out of the way ahead of time. And so um, if we could just, you know, find out what their their questions are, they can forward those to you, Bill, get with Danielle. And so when we do schedule the meeting, we know ahead of time what 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 the issues are and what the questions are.
Maylin, what were you gonna say?
I was going to suggest that you maybe even take it a step further. Would we want to just go ahead and pull back the agreement until um, those questions are resolved?
I think to give them.
They're not going to sign it. I mean, why why even have it out there?
Well, we've already approved it. It's out there. I think we just start clarifying and see, and then we can decide if it goes away later.
I think I think that it would, um, I think the professional and judicious thing to do is that uh, it's been made known that there are these questions out there. And I think that that's an issue for uh, staff to deal with from uh, the legal perspective. You know, we've spent a lot of times on this appropriation agreement. And I think there's some confusion as to the definition of an appropriations agreement versus a negotiation. And uh, I think that it would be uh, to everyone's advantage for for staff to handle this, for the professionals, I go back to, we have professionals in place to handle things like this and let the professionals handle it. And then um, on later, once those questions have been answered uh, to satisfaction, you know, they may be prepared to sign the appropriations agreement and and we move on in trying to to facilitate the elements of that. And if not, then at that time, we can determine whether or not a meeting is appropriate. I agree with what's what everything that's been said.
Oh, is have they asked for for Bristol, Virginia to be there? Is this just between Bristol, Tennessee and the CVB board?
No, Bristol also, I believe.
That's correct. That is correct.
Bristol, Virginia will be there?
No, the the ask has been for uh, the the three governing bodies, the Executive Committee of the Chamber and the City Council for both Bristol's uh, to 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 meet, to discuss the issue.
I mean, is that appropriate for uh, Bristol, Virginia to even be there since it seems to be an issue between uh, us and uh, CVB? Counsel?
My my response is they're part of the answer. So so yes, for me, it's it's for me, this is an agreement that goes three ways. CVB, Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia. Some way we've got to find a way to properly fund and 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 get the board structure. I'm I'm more about the funding part of things than I am about the board structure. But some way we need to find a way to move forward.
And I will say this, in many instances, um, there are some exceptions, but in most instances and situations like this, an autonomous board has proven to be the more uh, or to be a very successful vehicle. I know that um, there are other communities in our immediate area that are looking at uh, structuring an autonomous board. And uh, I don't, I think that, you know, we're in an era of transformation and we're just trying to find the best path forward. So I think the first step is to get the to have the questions answered, asked and answered. And then uh, that point, they may uh, be be prepared to sign the appropriations agreement. And if not, then we can, at that time, if we so choose, we can meet and move forward.
Bill, have they returned the other agreement signed as well, but just the chamber agreement?
No, that way, um, as you may recall, there are two appropriations agreements for the chamber. One is uh, specifically for funding uh, the Convention of Investor Bureau. The other is for chamber support programs. This includes Keep Bristol Beautiful, Lead Bristol and and other programs that they have. They uh, neither agreement has been returned.
Do we have a uh, on those agreements, is there a time period of when they need to be returned? Is there on any of those agreements, is there a date to be returned, date to be signed and sent back to us?
No, well, the way I I set the agreements out for all of our nonprofits on the thirteenth and received most of them back. And and the way I captioned, especially in the COVID era, historically, we uh, I've signed them and then their representative come out, has come by our office and signed them. We've made copies and so forth. In the COVID era, I just traded electronic versions of this. So I I have signed them. Danielle has signed them as far as our as our council and then forward them to the respective nonprofits. I received all the um, the the two from the parent from the um, chamber and one from the paramount during the first week. And then I sent them out again to the paramount and to the chamber uh, on the twenty first and and received uh, the I have received the paramounts back. And the the two agreements that I sent to the chamber are still outstanding.
So those the only two we have outstanding?
That is correct.
Okay.
Danielle, you look like you want to say something.
Well, I guess I, we can, I will, I'm certainly happy to go back and ask the chamber if they've got questions about the agreement. But they did send back a red line. And the red line deletes a lot of the provisions that we had added this year to the CVB that were specific to the idea of a restructuring agreement. And so my take based on that red line is that they are willing to sign an agreement that has been edited in the way that they have suggested. And so I guess that that I'm wondering what the sense of counsel is as to those edits.
Well, if we point out that that, and I really hadn't given any thought to that red line agreement, that came, I guess, on the afternoon or late afternoon of July the seventh as you, and that was our Tuesday business meeting, and that was, it was sent to all of you all. And then then you all subsequently approved the agreement that was sent to them that evening. So um,
superseded the red line because the we were in possession of the red line, but we voted on the appropriations agreement as we had drafted it. So I would say that there are obviously still some questions. It's been communicated to different members of council that there are legal questions. And so I think it's important that staffs work back and forth to resolve those questions. And then upon their resolution, we may uh, be in a position to formally meet.
Okay. And that's, so I think the answer then is that you were not in agreement with those edits. You preferred your original agreement and that's what you approved on July seventh.
But it's also checking, in some conversation or another that I had, it was unclear how if it was unclear about the payments and what if they don't meet the deadline and the payments that are already approved, do they go ahead? Or just some some figuring that part out that I think could be looked at that doesn't totally affect the change, what our wishes are for the change in structure.
Those the answers, those questions are very easily
Right.
pointed. I haven't been asked those questions.
Right. Yeah, 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 yeah. So just just seeing what can be clarified without changing the core assumption on our part or our plan or whatever. That's the heavy duty stuff. So.
But that's the that's the legalities of it since that's what's been brought into issue and that's best handled by staff.
Yep.
We'll do it. That's uh, Mayor, that's the end of my comments.
Okay, now we move on to council comments.
Oh, I guess I'll I'll go first. Um, I guess just of letting counsel know, I guess of the past couple of weeks of to meet a couple of things. Uh, I would like to bring up at our next uh, work session of talking about the BZA and taking another look at that board and um, just have some conversations um, about that. I'd like to add that if we could to our next work session. Um, and I guess in the same conversation that of, I guess, going forward and I've learned in the past couple of weeks that who we have on our boards
matters.
It does matter.
Yep.
And um, just so, and and it's nothing personal towards anyone and just so counsel knows that for myself, going forward, unless whoever, no matter what board it is, unless I know that person personally, or they have called and had a conversation with me about serving on that board, I will not be voting, I will abstain from voting for anyone, as I have in the past of I guess, just going along with what or who has applied. And if there's only one person that has applied, then okay, just going with that. I'll no longer be doing that. So um, it is not towards anyone individually or any person, but I just feel like that it's in the best interest of our boards that we all know who is serving. We have some type of idea of who that person is, why they want to serve on that board, and not based on a on an application. So I just want to let everyone know, I guess, of of even coming up on our Tuesday meeting, there may be, if there are board appointments, I will not be voting for a particular person because I have learned in the last couple of weeks that we really need to look at this and know who is serving on our boards and make sure that we have the right people. So
I think some of that's that bigger, we can make it bigger than just one board to, yeah. That's what I was saying earlier and also, but I would encourage, and we can talk more about it, but um, I'd say I probably seventy percent of the time, I call people. And uh, and so I think it's important not to count on people to call you because they don't know that's part of the process. Um, but I and in those calls, I've learned a lot. One of the times somebody had applied for one board and there were two applicants. And in talking to them, it was like, wow, I think you probably would really serve better on this other board. And we ended up, that person is still serving on that board. So there's a lot you learn from talking with people. So and I think a lot of that is our responsibility as well, but we can, we can talk about it at. And I don't always do, I ran out of time this last time I didn't call people. Also, I tend to call people and not promise support, depending on when it is or whatever. That if you if the applications aren't all received, you'll know who might apply at the last minute, who may be more highly qualified than the person you're talking with. So anyway, but I think that could be a good discussion.
It could also be, I'm sorry, Dan, scroll here.
No, I'm just with Bill, if we could, especially with the B Z A, I think there we need to have some conversations about that and how that process works. And as a counsel and go from there. If that could be added, I'd appreciate it.
Be glad to be glad to do that.
I'm sorry, Lee, go.
No, 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 you've covered it.
Anyone else?
I I really don't have any thing to say. I think we've covered most of everything I want to talk about and we talked about Networks Board. Yeah, I don't know exactly how to handle that. I got the impression, I don't know if you guys did or not, I got the impression today that it was kind of some of our private sector folks wanting to keep agreements to themselves and then kind of unfold it to government agencies and and pertinent folks like our economic development folks, which I think is, I think it's, I think it could be wrong. One of the good things that came about this, I thought, was is that Lee was asked to serve on this group of about six, I'm going to call it, three Networks Boards, three Net Rep Boards.
And three and three First Tennessee Development Board.
Okay, so it'd be a total of nine then?
Yeah.
That that are gonna, they're gonna going to look at the May Agreement 2018, which was, I thought, was crafted between Networks and Net Rep. But the the impression that I got was that that it was mostly a Networks agreement. Now, however that came about, I think there's some confusion there. And again, miscommunication or noncommunication. And so one of the main things that I think we put on the board today was is that all of our elected officials, all of our partners, all of our administrative staff need to be aware of where we are going, I guess, on an ongoing basis. And because it kind of it kind of gives the impression that we're wanting to craft an agreement over here by just a few people. And then boom, here it is, take or leave it, similar to what happened with the naming of Appalachian Highlands, which was referenced today as well. So I think Lee will do a good job in, you know, articulating those feelings and concerns. So I I think it was a great meeting this morning to really frankly air a lot of concerns and put it out there. So I was, I was, I was, I liked the way that that and I'll tell you, the Bristol part of that, we really were very vocal and we probably dominated a lot of the conversation. Well, I won't say dominate, I'll just say that we led a lot of the conversation. So I'm pretty glad with with the way things went today. But probably we, you know, as council members, you know, we need to make, if we know of a meeting that's coming about and we can chime in, let's try to help each other to be aware of each other's, you know, when we can, when we can chime into a Zoom meeting or something of that sort. And and, you know, and the same thing with Bill and Tom and anybody else that's, you know, in there. If we know something and it's appropriate for us to just sit in and listen, I think it's a world of information.
So just to point out, one of the reasons why we wanted Councilwoman Powers to serve is is the structural issue with Networks. The Networks is funded solely by by government. And yet our officers are, we have three officers and they are all private. So when we have exec committee decisions and work that's held at that level, the greatest, the representatives from our city and our counties, but not, not the elected officials. So that it's critical to have that representation for when there's significant discussions and decisions being made. So and we differ from Net Rep in that aspect, that it is funded, I think, majority by private or certainly mixed. So anyway, so that's, that's why it's critical to have representation.
Also mentioned too, that what I have learned and, sorry, Lee.
No, no, you're fine.
What what I've learned in the structure that they're coming up with is it's a structure similar to what Net Rep does when it comes to direct marketing of of their area, of their outdoor their outdoor activities and things of that nature. So, I mean, it's for them, it's something, you know, and I and this is the way I kind of take it, you guys chime in. But for them, it's very natural for an organization to include all those things. And it's something that we haven't done outside of our own city perimeters.
I think we, I think we are very polite, very thoughtful, very kind people that have waited for an invitation that wasn't coming. And the invitation has finally come, whether to the degree that that we are embracing it. We as a community are in control of this community's destiny and vicariously in the destiny of our region. If we don't engage, if we don't lead, then someone else is going to make those decisions for each and every one of us. Bristol, Tennessee City Council is fully engaged. We are fully prepared to lead and we are going to determine the destiny of our community. And because it will be a positive destiny, it's positive for the region as well. I think that, you know, it was emphasized today early on in the conversation. And I think the people of Bristol need to understand that we are advocating, we are engaged and we are leading on behalf of our community. We may be small in number comparatively speaking, but we are mighty in our acts. And by that, leaders that came before us 20 years ago in Sullivan County had the presence of mind to begin Sullivan Networks partnership. And our community had the presence of mind in our leadership to put into place an Office of Economic Development and to put a developer there. That has grown, the development aspect of BTS has grown. We have a lot to offer. We are making moves, we are working hard and we have an exceptional staff. And I think that all of our council today communicated that very succinctly. And so we are engaged, we are going to continue to be engaged and we are going to be part of the decision-making process of not only Bristol, but of this region. And we thank everyone today for the invitation to come to the table.
Chad, to follow up on your your comment about communications. I had sent Will an email yesterday, talked about the same thing about, you know, meeting notifications and and such. That's, you know, not going out to everyone. So hopefully after the day, it sunk into him pretty good.
So Maelyn, I think if you can follow up and copy us and Bill and just say that at our council meeting, we have discussed and that we would like to have an understand, an outline of what their process is that they're using. And we'd like to have the meetings and who the purpose of the meeting so that we know which ones should be critical for us to participate in. And that information ought to be provided to everybody, not just to Bristol. So, yeah, so and then.
Or excuse me, that are light interpreted as an expectation. It is our expectation that we are included in any and all meetings to move the region forward, period. Well, yeah, it is.
I also think that at the end of the day, we all know that without us being included and our support, it's a piece of paper that is, that's all it is, is a piece of paper. So I would hope they would realize that and will be included from now on.
I just, I would just forward everybody two emails, one that kind of addressed. Oh, it was basically from Will Barrett and and well, I take that back, it came from Networks. And it basically addressed the survey results.
Right, from the meeting, from the meeting with it we had in person, right?
Yes. And I also forwarded an email on structure that they were kind of talking about, basically that. So, you know, and I don't know if you noticed my notes in here, but I had several notes. But the scope of everything coming from a man named Mark Fuller, who's kind of our person who's kind of like guiding the conversations is what they want to do is break down into six scopes. Communication, communication and marketing, traditional economic development, non-traditional economic development backslash tourism, workforce development, entrepreneurship and government relations. This kind of is the breakdown of it, which all of that is good and makes sense. You know, it really does. I mean, I think the effort is, it can be commended. It's just how it goes forward, I think, is what they got. I think they got the real picture today.
And we talked a little bit about, just for everyone's edification, we talked a little bit, well, we talked a lot about the fact that you you can't, you know, you eat an elephant one bite at a time and that there are trust issues. And so what can be addressed first and foremost? And through that process, develop some form of or to restore some sense of trust. And we all agree that marketing may be that, but that, you know, it's the, as Margaret has often said, the devil's in the details.
Yeah. And just to say, the more that when you have things written down, it's then you can start negotiating or talking about this part's good, this part's I don't understand, et cetera. But till it's in writing, it makes it pretty difficult, which, I mean, and there's time for focus groups and times for gathering information, et cetera. And then there's times to put it in writing and be able to talk about it more meaningfully. So I can go next, just real quickly with focused on health and COVID and also on our city. And we recent City Council and particularly serving as mayor, and I don't know if everybody else got the same emails for both the decision to have a race and the decision to have a carnival and some of the things that are rather concerning to some of our community members. And for the carnival, I just wanted to thank our council and our city staff for having the foresight, both in acting when we saw safety issues several years ago with carnivals and and putting together ordinance that requires carnivals to be inspected. And that that's been part of our, how we do things for a couple of years. And then also thanks, and Danielle, I assume that was you that put that together. The where it was flexible enough that it can apply for the health and safety and safety applies right now to COVID. So it means that we had opportunity to work with the carnival folks to be sure that they were doing what they were supposed to do to follow the Tennessee pledge. Is that correct, Danielle?
I think Carl Fuller deserves more credit than I do because he was the driving force behind that amusement device ordinance.
We'll give him credit. He's not working here anymore, but maybe he's out there watching just for reminiscing. So anyway, yeah, so it's and that's how we want things to happen in our city, too, is we want the folks who work in our city to bring things that can be done better or can be changed to make it work better. So anyway, so just appreciate, appreciate that. that's it, I think.
Anyone else?
I'm just glad to be COVID negative. And
For now.
For now. And just want to extend my thoughts and prayers to those that are struggling with this. You know, we went through a few days, we had some family members test positive and they quarantined. And as first contacts, we were tested and have all tested negative as has our office. But you lay down at night and you don't know and you wonder, do I have a sore throat? How do I really feel? Am I going to be okay? Is my husband going to be okay? Is my family going to be okay? It is real. And for people that are having these experiences, it's nerve wracking. And so everybody is under a lot of pressure right now. The media has just gone off the rails with all of this, rightly or wrongly. And I just think we need to be as kind and as thoughtful with one another as we can be moving forward. So a lot of thoughts out there.
Great. I'll just say, I thank everyone for helping me get through this today. And then the first council meeting was live. And I appreciate everybody's help and look forward to work with everyone as I have been.
You did a good job, Maelyn.
Good job, Maelyn.
With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
There's your gavel.
Thank you.